All righty, it's 6:02. I will call this Rock Ridge Public School Board meeting to order. Everything about tonight's agenda is located on rockridgeschools.org or on the table at entering this room. At this time, I'll ask everybody to silence their phones and please rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll let the record reflect that Nicole Dahl is absent. She had to leave at the previous meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Support by Director Burden, support by Director Yohan. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this point, on item three, Rock Ridge School Board Representatives, presenter is Randy Lotiger.
So, welcome to our student school board representatives. This is their first night, so no pressure, but they, I'm going to allow them to introduce themselves, tell a little bit about yourself, what activities you're in in high school, and also what kind of legend wanting to be a student school board rep. Sound good?
All right.
You can stand if you want, Ashlyn.
Hello, I am Ashlyn Floysted. I am a senior here at Rock Ridge. I was involved in wrestling at the start of the year. I did drop out of that, so a good fit. Other than that, I was a core member, still am, and knowledgeable. I wanted to become a student rep when I just discussed with Mr. Hammer. He's been a good mentor throughout my high school career. The hockey rink incident, where he tried to discuss the ice time for the hockey teams. And I thought that whole situation was really interesting, but heard a lot of voices in that matter. And yeah, I want to thank you for having me on the board. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Glad you're here.
I'm Cora Ilola Zaller. I'm in 11th grade and some of the activities that I've been involved in is this year I'm the Leos Club President. Last year I had the honor of being the Vice President, and recently I had attended Alliance Convention, which was very interesting to go to. I have been a part of clubs like Web, Student Council, anywhere really I can get my foot through the door, which I am in huge involvement with because volunteering is important to me. I also am involved in CIS and AP classes, find that to be important too. And the reason I wanted to be on the school board really is because of that. I wanted to be involved and be a part of something bigger than myself. So, um, I'd say that's the biggest reason for me.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I did let them know that it's no pressure tonight. They can just sit and be observers, but at the next meeting they'll, they'll give a student report of the activities going on in the school. But, welcome. We're glad to have you.
All right. Up next, item four is the recognition of visitor input. We have Joni Banks, I'd like to speak. Come up to the podium, state your name, and you've got three minutes.
I narrowed my letter down to three minutes and seven seconds.
All right.
My name is Joni Banks, and my husband Steven here, and we live in Gilbert, Minnesota, and we are citizens of the Rock Ridge School District. We believe, we hope, we are a voice on behalf of many other parents on the Iron Range. We wish to share some concerns for our children in the public school system. We do not have access to the Rock Ridge curriculum, so we do not know if these changes are in our schools. Okay? But we have done some research and discovered some very troubling changes being implemented in public schools throughout America in general. You, our school board members, have been voted in and given a platform, a privilege, a responsibility, and the power to influence our children's impressionable minds and to prepare them for adulthood, to be good citizens with the education they need to reach their highest potential and contribute positively to our society. We firmly believe there are some topics and subjects with a negative agenda that want to infiltrate our schools here in America, infiltrate our children's minds. We believe this school board would not knowingly ever bring in material that would subject our children to these things. We pray not. Here is a list of four of these topics that are very concerning to us. There is explicit sexual material in many school libraries nowadays. I pray that not even one of these books is in our school libraries. Not even one. It's basically pornography readily available to children. There are classes being taught today in schools across America that paint socialism and communism in a positive light, teaching our children that America is evil. There are classes today teaching children a slanted, one-sided liberal view of politics. We do not want our children indoctrinated with political views that we do not hold. And lastly, there are schools all across America blurring the lines once clear, encouraging young minds who are so vulnerable and still developing in their youth, encouraging children that if they don't like the fact that they are a little boy or a little girl, can go through an excruciatingly painful, permanent series of surgeries. And parents have absolutely no say-so in this matter. It's hard to believe, but it's true. You can look it up. Statistics show that suicide rate is very high for young people who go through these surgeries. That's heart-wrenching. Even one life lost is too many in my book. A quote from The Guardian Digital News outlet, December 17, 2022, reveals through a survey of 34,000 13 to 24-year-olds that over 50% of transgenders and non-binary youth have attempted suicide.
Wrap it up, Joni, okay? Please. Wrap it up, please.
Yes, I'm on. Happy children do not want to take their own lives. They need emotional help, not surgery. I'll close this letter with a quote from President Ronald Reagan. If we ever forget that we are one nation under God, we will become one nation gone under. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And up next, I think, Catherine, you, Catherine, you wanted to speak just on, you wanted to speak just after the hearings, right?
I wanted to speak here, too.
Huh?
I wanted to speak here, too.
Okay, all right. You've got three minutes.
Okay. Thanks. I wanted to have a little. So I wanted to quick, because I know on the agenda it has the resolution to close, and to me it's kind of shocking because you just had the hearings and you already said that you're closing it, so it's kind of predetermined. Again, I'm opposed to closing of those schools due to, similar to what you've done to a lot of the schools that you've closed in the short timeframe. Last week I provided the school board with a purchase offer. I requested an emergency meeting for the Gilbert School prior to the school board meeting. I was denied, also being put on the agenda, to again present you with my plan. This happened back in August and September of 2022, and I presented you also with a purchase offer. I was again denied speaking at committee meetings to explain my plans. I was denied being added to the agenda at that time, as I am being denied this time. It costs less than $10,000 per year to mothball a building. That includes any, any school building that's approximate with how you mothball a building. And I, I shown the school board that I had more than, more than that, that I could mothball that building for 500 years or more. I had to step away from pursuing this because of my mom's death, and then six months later my uncle's. I recently got re-engaged and reached out to Zenith and Wolfhead. I feel that Zenith, based on my understanding, is that they would be willing to help with some of the management once the project is done. Prior to the start of the demo, Noah reached back out to me to see if I was interested. I know that there was another group that was interested, and then, and then as well as an individual in Gilbert. The barriers have been put up by the superintendent, by the, by the, by the school board with, for example, not being able to talk or being added. My plan included an Airbnb. So I want to welcome you all to Paige's Resort with a green roof and watch the sunset over the hills. Sleep here for $100 a night with a five-minute breakfast item delivered at a time you specify to your door. That's just an example of one of the things that I wanted to do. I also wanted to have heated storage, eventually heated, it would probably be cold in the beginning in the basement. An incubator kitchen, which is very common in Wisconsin, and it has caused a lot of businesses to start, because to have a commercial kitchen is very difficult, especially for a lot of the organic farmers. That's why the one in Silver Bay is very successful. And then I also wanted to have some luxury apartments above. And why I'm persistent, that's why I'm here again, a year later, and that is what gets our project done, is the persistence and continually trying to do a project. I'm a local entrepreneur wanting to save our schools, and I found that the barriers that I've been given to try and do that fall within the superintendent, the school board, that it's, it's easier for demo. I know that other people have tried to, the money that you've got from the I triple R B or from the state, that money can be used for repurposing the building rather than demo. However, the school board has chosen not to do that. I am again pleading with the school board to consider my purchase offer. That stands, and I'm willing to modify it and work with you to have so that we can save the Gilbert schools as they import to the community. Once that school is gone, who's going to want to live there? There's no daycare, there's not very many businesses. You know, we've already seen the loss of people. It continues to go that way. Again, I'm committed and I'm willing to do what it takes. I got involved with SCORE. They're a group that helps you make a successful business. They're retired businessmen. They know what they're doing. There is no way to fail. You look at examples of what's been done in Silver Bay, Cotton, and you follow what's been done. That's what you do with vision boards. I was in a class, and they were teaching about vision boards.
Wrap it up, Catherine.
Yep, yep, they're teaching about vision boards. That's what I would do, and I would like you guys to consider that, consider my offer. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item five up next is consider approval of grant in the amount of $25,000 from the Northland Foundation, Maureen Kirkle.
Thank you for giving me a few minutes here. I was involved, this is our second $25,000 grant to support the SMART program in our district, and I was involved in the first one, but I wrote the one that we just got quite a feat. Anyway, what we are going to do with, on your approval with this grant is we, the first one trained grades one and up, and we had several teachers from our district that trained. This one is going to support three, four, and five-year-olds, which the Northland Foundation supports heavily in pre-K education. So Sheena and I have already put together an email contacting our staff and the support, and their, the support is awesome, because we're not only doing teachers this time, we are doing support staff in Paris, which would be huge together for us. So I put a little, this, I don't know why this is, and I think because the need is so great, I put a little SMART news out here of some of the things that have come to me and what we're doing in the district, and I have never had so many inquiries. I've done workshops with the OTPTD, DAP teachers. I was in Grand Rapids. I'm now going to the homeschool teachers. The need for a program like this developmental at the core of, the beginning of education is crucial for successful, for our students to be successful learners. And so, anyway, that's huge. One of the neatest things that happened to me last week, because I've been going from Laurentian to Parkview up until this tomorrow, and I'll tell you about that circumstance that we have. I was putting stuff away because I bring in, and this parent came up, and she came into the room, and she said, "Do you do the sensory SMART program?" And I said, "Yes." And I said, she said, "I have a child with sensory needs," and she said, "The Ascencia Hospital OT Department in Virginia knows about us that we have this program." And when her daughter went to her classes that she has, that girl already knew how to do some of those sensory integration techniques that we have in our school today, and I think that's a tribute to you supporting this program and having Ascencia know that we have this here. So, in our classrooms, we have, we have, we have a system with our SMART program where you have me, and now you have another person, but this is just till the end of the year, who trained, this is just a really cool thing. She trained, and she is now doing Parkview, the Parkview School. I had a 3.8, .38 position, I don't know if you realize that, and it was cut in half, almost in thirds. So I was doing one day at Laurentian and one day at Parkview. Now, because of Kylie Ancini, who's been trained, and she's been under my supervision, she's done a wonderful job. We are able to work together, so now we have more classes. I'm back at Laurentian doing two days. She's doing two days and two afternoons, so we have more of this going on supporting with our teachers. This is huge because the needs are great. I have had the opportunity, being at both schools, working with the threes, fours, fives, and some sixes, and I can't tell you how the needs are great. That's all I can tell you. In this program, which I absolutely love and believe in, helps support those learning readiness skills that these kids are coming without, and it's huge. So, when Michelle Ufford came into the district and her daughter Lucy had been in the program, it was so much fun to meet with her, and she watched classes that I was having, and she also sat down with me for about an hour, and the program spoke for itself. We got the $25,000, which I feel is huge. I'm just somebody who believes in something good for kids. So, on the back here, this, I just want to tell you that I have documented 95, about 95% mastery at both of our elementary schools of kids crossing midline, balance, alligator, crawl, pencil roll hearing. We've done some vision screening and found out that, oh my goodness, these kids that can't come in and do binocular vision, the ones that are on computers, their eyes are tearing, and they're just, they're, they're even getting pain in their eyes because they're on computers so much. So we have things to combat that. All of these activities that we have been doing, that I feel and have documentation for, I think we're at 95% of these being almost mastered for our threes, fours, and fives, and our sixes are already there. So, what's really hard for me is when I got split, is to watch that window that's up at the Laurentian building and watch all those kids that don't have SMART anymore looking at me when I'm doing the scarves things, and if you ever want to come and see what I do for left and right, and eye-hand coordination, and all those things, they sit there and they look, and I see the sadness in their eyes because we can't, we only have enough time. So I thank you for your time, and I hope you'll support me and my position and this wonderful program. Thank you.
Thanks, Maureen. Thank you.
And come and see me.
At this time, I'd ask for motion to approve the grant.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Director Lotiger. Support, Burton. Any discussion?
I would just like to say I'm, I'm super happy to hear that it's going on in both the Parkview and, and the Franklin, because I know that it was not happening, so I'm very happy to hear that. And I, in looking through this grant, is part of the funds going to be used to, to purchase some new material for, say, the Parkview, because you were carting things back and forth? Is Parkview getting some new stuff?
Okay. That's good. I did want to, okay, that's a very good question. In my SMART, Sheena, who really wanted this program and has told me she's wanted it for years, has supported, we are working to have the same equipment at both places. If I tell her we need balance boards, bingo, they're done. If I tell her we need this over there, bingo, it's done. We are getting the same equipment at both places. She, we are also getting monkey bars, which are huge in core development. It also is, converges eyes, eye training. I have a set in, in my room, there's one over at Laurentian, ours that's coming to Laurentian, because we had to take mine and put them in my room. We ordered a set that is going to be able to be leveled according to the age level of the kids, and we, our goal is to get both places equal with equipment, time, time, you know, for the kids and whatever. They have a few more classes over there, that's why I'm only doing two days at Laurentian, and Kylie Ancini, who was trained, I, she's excellent, your name comes up, to come in, and she's doing two full days and two afternoons. She loves the program, once you start doing it. So we are balancing that to the best of our abilities.
Excellent, I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
It is, and that's my goal here, too. But this is huge for us, this grant, it really is, because this, we've gotten $50,000 now from, from the Northland Foundation for this program alone.
Awesome.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
And we'll keep you up to date on how it all goes, because it's great.
All right, thanks, Maureen.
Thank you.
At 5.2, consider approval of updated technology for students and teachers. Presenter is Mr. Bryson.
Hello. Care with me, I'm finding the recorder right now. I'll do my best here. We've kind of gone over this material a few different times now. We had a committee meeting about it, and then we kind of briefly brought it up at a board meeting earlier, and we're looking at going with a refreshment of our fleet in a manner that would replace all of our iPads district-wide, and that's both for students, Paris, and teachers, and then replacing half of our laptops for our teaching staff. And we're going to target that this first round, if approved, with outfitting our high school teachers with those new devices, because that population of teachers are moving around their building a lot more than our elementary teachers are, they're teaching at different places in the building, so we want to make sure that they're getting the newest devices to get, to facilitate that way of teaching. And then, this is a four-year term, a lease term, but we plan on selling back all of the devices after three years, because we found that we get a lot higher resale value after a three-year term of devices. We are going to be selling back our current fleet, but we ran these a year longer than we had planned to, and we're really feeling the effects of that right now. I'm sure our student representatives know how, how it is in the student body right now with devices breaking, batteries are going out on our students, and so we're really struggling with that right now, so this is really important for the district at this point in time. Are there any questions for me on this?
I have a question. I see, I see one number here. Is this the total for everything, the $348,000? $100?
That's, that's the yearly lease. So the total is 1.392 million over a four-year term, with $348,000 each year for that, for that four-year lease. Now, we do have some money coming in from the Emergency Connectivity Fund, was a grant that we got awarded, we're still working on the details of that. We initially, when we got the awarding, the letter said that we had received the grant, told us we were getting $821,000, but then they kind of backstepped a little bit. I think they're seeing that they're running out of money in their, in their pot, that they're issuing money from, and so now it's looking closer to 480,000. So we've got the first year of the lease payments covered with that, and a little bit of the second-year lease payments with that, and we plan on using our sale of the equipment at the end of three years to pay for the entire fourth-year lease payment. So we're really looking at about a year and a half of lease payments that the district would have to work on.
What grant did you say that was?
The Emergency Connectivity Fund.
Emergency Connectivity. Is that part of ESER or anything like that?
No, it's different than ESER. But it was money that was brought up during the COVID pandemic.
Oh, wait, okay.
It definitely softens the blow.
Yeah, it does.
And so then what we would do in three years is we would sell off all of our iPads, and we would Google a list like this, and then we would buy the other half of those laptops coming with a new lease, would outfit our elementary teachers, and we would go to a every-six-year refresh cycle for staff for laptops, and then every-three-year refresh cycle for students for iPads.
I'd make the motion to approve that.
Motion by Director Yohan. Support, Burton. Any discussion?
I'd just like to add, in, in the minutes, the total cost, that's all.
What's that, Paul?
I would just like to add in the minutes to reflect the total cost in our minutes.
And one thing for the board to know, just before you vote, is that the old Virginia district did have a voter-approved levy, and when that went to the voters, it was sold to the voters as we need to pay for buses, we need to pay for technology, we need to pay for keep class sizes low. Now, when the two districts merged, that, Evelyn Gilbert then inherited that, and I know you heard a little bit about it, but originally, when this passed to the voters in Virginia, we told them buses, technology, and try and keep teachers. So that's just, just so you know, historically, that's what we told the public at the time, and they voted yes.
Are you speaking of excess levy referendum?
Yep.
And how many years left do we have of that? I know Virginia has more than, or, we have different amounts of time for excess levy referendums that we combined.
You have two or three more years left, and then because of the new state law, the board could vote to renew that again. It was an original seven-year.
No, I know that. I just wonder how many years left as a combined. I know Evelyn Gilbert in Virginia had different time terms, terms of time.
Yep.
When does that end?
I believe you still have two or three.
Right, that's what your answer, two to three years, okay.
Okay, any more discussion on 5.2? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item six, quarterly.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Bryson. Up next is Carl Anderson's present, quarterly presentation.
Thank you for letting us take a little of your time tonight. For the new members, Patrick Gallagher from Carl Anderson, and this is Pete Ovind, and he's the project manager. We've been involved in this project for about five years. Every quarter, so this will be October, November, December, we give out an update on the core four items that you'll see on the screen here tonight until those projects are completed. So, thanks for your time. We'll get started. Here we are rolling. So a little bit of background for the new board members. I've been here on this project since 2019, doing pre-construction, worked on the Laurentian Elementary School, and then currently working on the North Star Elementary School. And then Patrick here has overseen the entire project since 2018.
Since the referendum.
Yeah, so I've been here for a little while.
All right. And the polls have warmed. Maybe that'll get changed when they get that extra IT.
Yeah.
Up and running. So, just real quickly, obviously, the high school and the Laurentian are completed. We're working on the North Star right now. Hopefully you've been by the site. I know you did a tour in the past, but people drive by there quite often, and it's getting a lot of notoriety as it's getting closer to completion. And then we have the demolition projects that we'll cover, as well as there are some projects that are going on in this building itself. So, the core four, we cover schedule, safety, quality, and the budget, and then we're going to talk a little bit about some miscellaneous projects, as well as the KES contract amendment number 12, which is for the Gilbert demolition, as well as we've got a building permit. They changed the laws now. It used to be that the school district would buy, get the building permits, and then provide that to the contractor, and that got switched. So now the contractor has to apply, and we had to take that onto the hard-cost budget. So we just moved the money from the one pot to the other, so it has to be done by amendment. So, the schedule. This will be the last time you'll see this big timeline, because 90% of it over here is now obsolete, with the two projects complete, and we'll call it North Star proper, just about complete. We've still got some additional work that will continue past this line and go off the screen over here for both demolition projects, as well as the, the two added scope items on North Star, which is site work and the existing gym basement area. But some of the things that we're looking at here right now, we are in the demolition of Gilbert, we are wrapping up North Star, and we are doing assessment. are in the demolition of Gilbert. We are wrapping up North Star. And we are doing assessment on the Evelyn campus. 100% complete on these two. When we say 89% complete on North Star Elementary, that is the building proper. Again, it's not that site work or what's going on, because that hasn't been added yet, what's going on in the existing gym. Both 74% complete on the demolition projects. But again, that percent changes too if you add the Evelyn scope. And that takes you up through the Gilbert project right now. Remaining work. So we did do these different warranty walkthroughs. And we did the high school, several different ones. We did the site work at one time. And then we did the building envelope. And we just recently completed the building walkthrough. So, going through with your staff and looking at anything that might not be working in these different facilities. And then we do that right, right at 11 months because you have a one-year warranty that allows us to get those items corrected at no cost to you, even if it goes beyond that 11 months. So, that's what we're working on right now. We have Brent Wells, who is working on that list. And we're going to get wrapped up pretty quickly here. Safety. So we have about 75 workers. That fluctuates a little bit at North Star right now. And we've got a few workers in this building as well doing the mechanical work. There's about 10 contractors active on the site right now. And we've had zero lost time accidents and zero OSHA citations. And we've had OSHA consultations. We've got another one coming on the 20th of February. And that'll be at the Gilbert demo consultation. Going to go into quality. We're just going to cover this in a little more detail.
So we'll start with the demolition update. So, over in Virginia, if you've driven by the site, you've seen it now. It's a nice backfilled level site, ready for the site workers starting the spring. But just some progress photos. Back in November, this is from the third level at North Star. Get a little sense of the activity going on, lots of equipment, and how big that site is. So then in December, we had it from second level at North Star. You can see the progress over the month, just about wrapped up. And then by the end of that week, from third floor, again at North Star, on December 14th, even got a little bit of snow in that photo. So, you can see some carpet going in on third floor too. So, we'll get to that in a little bit. Then I have a sneak a January one in there, even though the quarter ended at the end of the year. Just had to show this cool view from Sixth Avenue and Fourth Street, from the south end of the building. Get a nice sense of what that complex is going to look like. So.
One thing too, to remind you, the city did upgrade the sanitary sewer in what used to be the street, and then the school was built over the dub. So that was done as well during this whole process. And that did not come out of your funds. That was a separate
Over at Gilbert, the abatement process. Just to give you a sense of what these guys have to go through to do the abatement of these facilities. And the suits that they got to wear, full tieback, respirators, their enclosures, just to make sure that they're staying safe. That's some nasty stuff in there. So. Just a progress photo of the truffle coming out from the school. And then over at the exterior, they typically go around the exterior for window culk. That's asbestos containing. And they use a man lift, as you can see in that photo, and hit all the windows on the exterior. And at the end of the quarter, bikes brought their first machine on site. And then today, they started demolition, Monday, January 22nd. So, next quarter, we'll give you an update and give you some progress photos of that.
We kept that window demolition real close to the first days that we were going to demolish the building. Because without those windows in, there was no security of the building anymore. You couldn't get in through those windows.
All right. Any questions on demo? All right. We'll run right into North Star. So, rendering comparisons. This is the rendering from the design team. As you can see, it's matching up very nicely. We've got the wood siding on now. All the windows complete, just about complete with brick. Some of that'll take place this spring, once it warms back up.
Where are the trees?
No trees yet. Site work. At the main entry and your decorative masonry wall, that's all complete. And again, all the glass is in now too as well. Up on third floor, don't mind that, it's not level two, it's actually level three, the photo. It's further along now. We've actually had a punch list up there already on level three. So, this was taken back in December for the quarter. And so that's, no carpet is done in this photo, but it is complete now. So, the spaces are coming along really nice. The media center up on third floor, this is right before they put the carpet down. So they lay their, their glue down and then start laying carpet tiles. All the clouds are in, recessed lighting. It's pretty neat. So, coming in the main entrance, this is an older photo from October. Not too much has changed besides the fact that a lot of this material is now installed in the building. So it's a little bit more open in there now. So. And then, looking back from inside the commons, back at the main entrance, these clouds here, oop, these ones like this, these are all installed now. So again, next time you take your board tour, give you an update, you'll see some more completion there. Jumping back outside on the south end of the building, the retaining walls, that's where these are actually located. We had to do some temp enclosures for winter concrete work. So those are all complete now. And then the loading dock ramp coming down here. And the link is all complete as well. Just another angle of this photo. You can see the length between the existing gym and the new school. All these metal panels are done. You'll see in the last photo here.
Again, that work couldn't be completed when the existing school was there. There just wasn't enough room to do that. Actually, that foundation goes underneath where the existing building used to be until it was demolished.
That was a fun sequencing challenge. So, looking at the northeast corner of the building, just showing that all the glass is now complete from the last quarter. We did do our full building air test, as required, with the building commissioning agent, Intertec. And we passed that, and we're moving right along. So, on the north side of the building, just showing the completion. Again, they were installing windows last time. Those are all complete now. Building air test is complete. Just to get a sense of what the site looks like from ground level, you've got a lot of aerial photos from second and third floor at North Star. But standing down at the south end of the building, looking out at your site, you can see it's a vast site that we're going to fill up really quickly this summer. And when you turn to your left, facing east, right about where this mound of dirt is, is where the outdoor playground is going to be. So, I might keep those photos going as we progress in the springtime. So, you can see that come together. So there's some carpet done. Up on third floor, south end of the building, lots of natural light coming in with those big glass windows on the south end. And then you've seen this picture already. So now the whole third floor looks like that. Like I said, we completed our punch lists already, already correcting items up there, and working towards our level two punch list coming up in a couple weeks. And there's that photo again, just to depict the metal panels are completed. That really finished off the south end of the building. Next board tour. It sounds like March 11th is what worked for you guys. If that's still the case, then we'll get that on the schedule. The building is going to be substantially complete by then. So it'll be a really fun tour, get to see all the pieces complete all the way through kitchen and everything. So, be a good one.
Would you be able to supply our new student, school board reps with gear to go in?
I'm sure we could find some. Play up a couple extra.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Any questions on the North Star update? Otherwise, we'll jump into budget.
Couple clarifications. So on about your fifth slide, if you have like the second floor, and there's a picture of the media area, media centered area?
Yeah.
Is it, is that the only, I know in the Laurentian, there are like kiosks, book kiosks on multiple floors. Are there?
Yes. There will be multiple books on different floors, like you see at Laurentian. But this is an area that, yes, there will be books here. And it'll be also used for other teachers who want to use media there. But yes, the books are still going to be distributed, but there'll be a concentration here.
Okay. And I went through the high school, and I see the high school has like kiosk areas of, of books on different, for different subjects. Okay, so.
And there's one of those on each floor, the actual called media center.
Oh, and at the North Star?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that comparable to the, to the Laurentian? Do they have that too? That, this centralized media center?
They do. On each wing, they have a centralized, I don't know what they call it there, but similar media center library between classrooms. So, kind of an open space like this.
Okay. But I thought you said this is like a, a main, main one, but the North Star has other book kiosks in addition to this main one on each floor?
I don't know about the kiosks.
Yes. Because in the elementary school, we literally want kids to trip over books all the time. Because kids need to have actual real books in their hands. So they will be everywhere. Like you go into Laurentian today, they are everywhere in that building.
I know. I just wanted to ask the question and clarify whether the North Star and the Laurentian had the same type of centralized media center, like, like the North Star.
It looks a little different, which is a little different than the high school, which we put in a hallway. So kids literally have to see the books to go from the north to the south wing there. And so, but we didn't intend for both buildings to be designed exactly the same.
Is there any electronic devices or anything like that in this centralized media area?
Yes. So it'd be monitors and a smart board and projector. On this wall right here, there'll be a marker board, whiteboard here. And then where you see these, two extra short throw projectors will be able to project out on that.
And anything for students to use electronically in this area? Or is that just?
I don't know if they're iPads or.
Instructional.
Devices.
Okay.
They'll still have the iPads available.
Just a general question. Do, in the new facilities, do we have any, any computer labs anymore, or anything like that?
In the high school.
Lab in the high school?
Yep. There are. There's a couple of them.
In the high school only?
Yes.
Okay. Just curious, because I don't know the answer.
Have you toured the, the Laurentian or the?
Everything except the North Star.
You haven't toured the North Star yet?
No, I missed that one. And then the other part on the outside play area there, does that include that sliding hill for the North Star kids that they, they've been on?
That is what we're working towards right now, getting final pricing on all the site work that goes on the south end of the site there, where it's all cleared now. And there is a sliding hill.
Okay. And so, the Evelyn Gilbert students at the Franklin had the sliding hill. And I understand we even had Virginia students, elementary students come and say, please make us a sliding hill at the North Star. And so, I don't believe that the Laurentian students have that. And I, I think that we should put some money aside, whatever it takes for that, maybe some other equal, equal amenities for elementary students on the Evelyn side, on the Laurentian side.
I would agree with that.
They'll be missing, I don't, I don't know that there is even an area that you could consider about the Laurentian, a sliding area for those kids. So.
There's always room for a sliding hill.
Well, I think we, we need to put that, consider putting that in the budget for them too. So we've got.
We can look.
Yep.
All right.
Get on that path. See if there's room.
Think of a couple, but there's a lot of rock.
Keep you here for another year, man.
There's a lot of rock off to the west there.
Cover it up.
Okay. So this is the overall budget. You guys have seen this slide before. It's just been updated now with the Gilbert funds. So we're up to a total of 206 million. And then 92% of that has been spent to date. We're getting really close to the end. So, North Star specifically, schedule-wise, as Pat mentioned, we're about 89%. So we're wrapping up. And that is on the building proper itself, the North Star building. So, we're working through pricing for the gym model, work in the existing gym, and then the south side of that site that we were just talking about. Once that comes through and it's approved, then that scheduled duration will extend out through the end of the year. Or, I shouldn't say end of the year, through August 16th. Because I believe there's a grand opening in August sometime.
And again, that's all the site work that was underneath the high school before it was demolished. We now have a scope on that. And we've got a plan that goes, that has your sliding hill in it.
So total budget at North Star is 40.4 million. And we're about 74% spent on that. Continency-wise, we're sitting really good right now. We're less than half spent. And we're getting towards the end of the budget and items and finishes, that kind of thing. So, it's looking really good. Any questions on North Star specifically?
Yeah, you said the total is 40, 40.4 million for the North Star. Originally, it was 27 million. Now, I know I've asked this question before, and I was told that COVID and inflation, COVID and inflation, but that's quite a big, big increase. It's about 85% increase. And was there scope added to the original plan, other than, other, other than, scope that added to that amount other than inflation and/or, I don't even know how you can monetize COVID in there. But we can always figure out inflation per year, and then inflation of construction products. And, you know, it could be real detailed, but.
So just, I'm sorry.
You know, that, so those factors and/or added scope from our original, original plan of 27 million.
So just to refresh your memory, back during the COVID, when we were starting this project, we went and got bids on the project. And that was the time it was documented, the difference in the original budget versus the actual costs, which showed you what had happened in construction. Those were competitive. So that was the beginning of the project. Since then, there have been some changes and some scope adds. We have those all documented. That's each quarter that we've come to you, we've covered those. If you'd like, we can go back and pull those, those minutes from those past quarters. And that will show you where all those came from.
Well, I personally would at another time. And I could probably talk to you separately. But I think we get, sometimes we lose track of, you know, previous and how things have been modified or changed or, or whatever. And I think I remember reading an article in the paper from the school district back when, when it was the COVID, that during COVID, that's a good time to go out for bits because, because prices were dropping, because, you know, the economy and everything. So, prices were lower, and it's a good time to buy something when prices are lower. COVID actually caused a lot of that, rather than increased, you know, prices. I know there can be examples on both sides.
That's completely wrong.
That's wrong.
Come on.
Oh, you're giving misinformation.
That's ridiculous.
That's not, well, you know.
I'm paying, I'm paying 40% higher on my product that I buy. 40% pre-COVID.
During COVID, during COVID.
Don't. Prior to COVID, I was, I was at this amount. I'm paying 40% more today than I did pre-COVID on my product.
The one thing is also, COVID disrupted the supply chain, and it made it very hard to get things. And you had to order way out. And we were, we were fortunate that these gentlemen here and KK saw ahead. They were dumping stuff everywhere.
A lot of things on site to save.
I remember it went from 270 bucks a square foot for the Laurentian, to I believe it was 426 at North Star. I think of the numbers that I remember, that I, I mean, using the difference of the bids from the COVID increase of inflation, something like that, for similar materials. So that's.
I'll, I'll produce that article at a lifetime. But I guess that's all I had to ask about that.
Okay. And just, just to be clear, when you said we lose track of, we don't lose track of it.
We, we as the public and we as board members.
Okay. But we bring an amendment each and every time something changes on that budget. And just so everyone understands, especially your new board members, we meet with your accounting personnel every month. And we go through the entire budget, not only accounting personnel every month, and we go through the entire budget, not only what was budgeted for each project, but what's been spent, and we reconcile the books between what you've spent on the soft cost side, which are things that are not construction-related, but are like insurances and that type of thing. That's gone through every month, and then we come and report to you every quarter, which is why we're here today, so. Here's a good question.
Yeah, and I was not implying that, you know, you aren't keeping good record. You know, there's so much to remember, I'll say personally from my memory, to remember things and to forget things, and then when you start remembering and adding things up and how the initial project and the costs and the values have way increased, and for whatever reasons, we, I, I bet the public does too, and other board members tend to lose sight of, of the whole picture.
And that, and that's the importance of the documentation, so if you ever want to go back and revisit that, it's all right there, and there's actually a slide that Pete's going to cover that shows each amendment that has happened and how we've got that captured, so. Anytime you want to look at that, any board members, we can do that. Give me a call.
All right, so overall demolition projects specifically, 74% complete on the schedule, and that will take us, when we hit 100%, that'll take us through the Gilbert demo. Okay, so it doesn't include anything in Ebble. Total budget spent, just over 50%, and there's still some bills coming in for the VHS stuff in Virginia, and then obviously the Gilbert pay apps. So that 7.9 million is through the Gilbert. Contingency sitting really good over at demo as well, haven't spent much there. A lot of unperceived items within the building, we're taking care of with the destructive investigation that took place over there, so it was all able to get into the bid documents and covered, so then we didn't run into a lot of surprises, and that shows right there in the contingency not being spent. And we're doing the same thing over in Ebble currently, and I'll show you that schedule in a little bit.
Pete, while you're on it, and to refresh my memory and to refresh the memories of any other board members that might, might need it and/or are new representatives, could you give an explanation of what contingencies are?
Yeah, so contingency is built into the project in order to cover any unforeseen items, hidden things within the walls, under floors, underground, that's not exposed beforehand before bid time, so that's, that's a big part of what contingency is.
For demolition, the more time we get in the building when it's vacated before we start demolishing, just makes that all that much smaller because we are able to uncover all those things. And we say destructive demolition, we bust out a piece of wall, we make sure that what's inside the wall isn't hazardous materials, that type of thing. Contingency on the construction side is similar, something that, that was not foreseen at all, like we're digging, one of the projects that we did, we dug down and we get some old foundations. So you can't hold the contractor that's doing the digging responsible because we didn't know it was there, so then you have that contingency to pay for that to be removed and backfilled. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. Is that helpful?
Yeah. All right. And then just a reminder, the unfunded demolition is everything over in Ebble right now, so that's not a part of this budget. And that just reiterates, we did this slide last time we were here, and showed the costs for the Virginia demo, and then the remaining Gilbert campus demo of the 2 million for the total of 7.9, so that's how we got there. All right, so over in Ebble, we started the destructive investigation over there, that's been going really well, the Franklin's complete now, and they're moving into other areas of the building, so it's going really well, sending samples out, checking on materials to see if any asbestos containing materials are bad.
And we spent some time this weekend, as well as, there was no school there today, so we were able to get to parts of the building that normally are inhabited by students and get all of Franklin taken care of, so that, that was a big deal, because we didn't know how we were going to get that done while it was still occupied, but it worked out quite well. All those tests have been taken, samples have been taken, and those have been sent off for results. Now we're, we have to do the basement, but there aren't students down there, and then we'll work our way through the rest of the building.
Just, just so the public knows, air quality of the building wasn't compromised by you doing this.
No, we're, we're talking about small little sandwiches.
Okay, all right, very good.
Piece of carpet, piece of paint, that type of thing.
Okay.
Good point. As you see up here, bid docs are going to be complete by the 15th of February, so mid-February, and we'll release those out to contractors for competitive bids, both on the abatement and demolition of the entire campus. We'll do the standard pre-bid meeting, it's a part of the public bidding laws and something we typically do anyways, just to walk the contractors through the building, make sure they understand their scope of work, and get a good sense of what the project entails.
Very important on demo projects, because we don't have the detailed plans that we do on a building project. So some contractors will choose not to come to that meeting for a building project because they have everything in plans, can't do that on demo, because they have to walk through that building and take a look at it.
So bids are going to be due on March 7th. We do have a backup bid date, we typically have that as well in case a lot of questions come in, and we need to answer those thoroughly to make sure we get good competitive bids, so we have a backup date for bids. And then we do our bid tabbing, so we call the contractors, go through their scope of work, make sure they have everything included in their number to make sure that we're covered. So after that, we will be bringing it to you at the end of March, and looking for a recommend, or we'll be presenting a recommendation for approval of those bids. Any questions on that schedule? All right, so miscellaneous updates, so in this building, the district administration building, there is a mechanical upgrade phase one, and we're still working on that one. We have installed one energy recovery unit, one showed up damaged, and we're waiting for the reordered one to come in. So obviously, we're going to put a damaged one in, so unfortunately, we waited that long and it showed up incapacitated.
So by damaged, it wasn't damaged a little, it was about 10 inches shorter than it should have been.
Yeah. So unfortunately, that one's still going on.
I mean, just to be clear, sorry, Pete, but all the systems are functioning, it's just the energy recovery and the efficiency is a little bit reduced on the one unit, the other one is fully up and running now, so.
Yeah, that's a good point. Phase two mechanical upgrade, so that's the newest project on the way right now. We've been working on that one right now, getting the mechanical room ready for equipment to show up, and now we hurried up and wait because we need to wait for the equipment to actually show up. I think these were 34 weeks out from the time order.
They ship an early mail.
So once those get back or onsite, we will start back up in the spring, which times out well because there'd be some exterior work as well around this building to pretty it up a little bit and make it presentable, so.
So before we take that pause, it's going to get a little loud tomorrow, just have to say that to Dr. Schmidt, we'll, we'll put the duck port together that we can do, and we'll finish everything off as far as we can go, and then the end of the month here, we're going to pull out and come back in April. In April, we get some of the equipment in so that we can put some things up on the roof, some exhaust fans, that type of thing, and then in May, the big units come in, so.
All right. If no other questions, then I'll go into the amendment. I'm sure you guys have reviewed this already, so I'm just going to kind of go through it to you, stop me if you have questions. Okay, so this is amendment number 12, and this is the slide that Patrick was talking about from the start of the original referendum, and every amendment that we've come here and presented to the board and approved, all the way through 11, tonight is number 12. Again, I'll say 46 million, and again, that's for the Gilbert demo and the one building permit due to the law change for who has to buy that permit.
How much was that permit?
14,000.
Oh, that's for a school, right?
Yeah, and it's a reimbursable cost, dollar for dollar.
And it actually works out better, it's just that we didn't have the money in that, in the right side of the budget, because we used to come over and try to lead the accounting people from the district through how to do the website to get the permit. Now we don't have to do that, we can just do that and then pay for it, so. In future ones, we would put that over in the article.
Andrea will be very happy that she doesn't have to do it.
She did go through it though.
Yes.
She's good. We got it through.
Okay, so amendment number 12, the total add is 453,529.24. So that's the general conditions, site services, reimbursables, and CMV for the Gilbert demo, and that, like I said, that permit is under the reimbursables for this project.
So I have to clarify something for all of you. The, the way a CMA project is, just to refresh your memory, is you pay each of those contractors out there direct, in other words, your accounting personnel, cut a check for the carpenter.
On time, by the way.
For the dirt work, for the studs. What this is, is just the Kraus Anderson part, where we do the general conditions, the site services and reimbursables, and then our fee. So when you do an amendment, you're just, you're just amending our portion of it. All that other part, we've still got in the budget, so that's why you see the difference between 206 million and then you're seeing the smaller dollar amount, that's why there's that division.
One last reminder on all of these items, is whatever doesn't get spent on the project during that gets sent back to you in a deduct amendment, so. We've done those in the past too, in that one through 11, so. Okay, any questions? This is the detail breakout. You guys have seen that?
Mm-hmm.
And the notes, okay?
So Pete, again, for informational purposes, go through definitions of general conditions, site services, reimbursables, and construction manager fee.
So general conditions are items that allow us to actually build the project, so forklifts, skid steers, sanitation rental dumpsters, those kind of things that are used to build a project. Site services, that's my time, Pat's time, our superintendents, all the admin time for the project. Reimbursables are like that building permit, it's a dollar for dollar exchange.
We often call those pastors, because whatever it costs, you just pay that same dollar amount as a pastor.
And then the CMV is just the flat 2% fee that we're contracted with the district on the cost of the work.
So above your 2%, but is it already in the budget, the work that the others do, like the architects and those other types of people that work on a project like this?
That is not included in any of this.
Is that in the original budget?
It is in the budget on the owner cost side, the soft costs, different pot of money.
How could we figure those out though, if we're making changes as the project goes along and we're adding things, making changes?
They're based on a percentage as well, they get a percent fee.
Okay, so where do we have comfort for that then? I know, I've always known that you get 2%, but isn't there, the total is a 6%, and it's divided out among multiple entities? I just am wondering where the other 4% is accounted for.
You've seen our overall budget sheet before with the different projects, and the upper portion is hard costs and the lower portion are soft costs. Those are considered soft costs down on the bottom, and those are direct checks that your accounting department writes for different services and things like that. So you pay the architect out of that, and you pay for furniture.
Furniture.
Furniture, which is quite a large item, technology, those types of things. So that is not a part of this amendment, this amendment is just the Kraus Anderson portion.
And are those costs, do they come out of the original bonding money? Or are those at the bottom, yeah, okay, that comes up.
All the dollars on that entire sheet are from the referendum, or dollars that you've infused through other sources throughout the project.
So those, those costs appear as we need them, that are related to these add-ons and these add, added scope to the project? I, I actually am not understanding how that is counted for, if it's extra money. If we, if we budgeted for the 178 million, and then we got another 13 million, however, that they're doing extra work for us.
I'll tell you what, we'll, we'll print that overall budget for you right after we're done, if you don't mind, I'll come back and I'll hand deliver that to you publicly. The upper portion is the revenue portion, and every time that you have brought money into the project, whether it be IRRB or additional state funding, that's when those dollars came into the budget. We budget those down below, but this is where you actually distribute across Kraus Anderson our portion of it, and then those, each of those contractors are also on a line in there under hard costs, and those are the actual bidding contractors. So when we come to you and we presented you a long time ago, it's been a while, so I get this, and we came in and said, here's all the contractors and all their bids, that's when you approve their portion. And then as far as what you pay the architect, that's on a fee similar to what we have here, and that happens as a percent of that, and that's a separate contract you have with the designers.
And again, is that paid with additional monies or with monies of the 178 million?
Okay, the 178 million got added to significantly, right?
Right, yeah.
But when we bring that revenue in, we pull those percentages out right away so the amount that's left can be spent on the actual construction. So that's when that happens.
I was just wondering where, where those, those costs were accounted for. Thanks.
I'll bring you that sheet, because I know we went through it before, but it's been a long time, and you could see then what's going on. We'll print one on 11 by 17.
No problem.
I have one, but it's not out dated here, so.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Pete? Okay, no more being had, can I get a motion to approve 6.2?
Make the motion to approve.
Motion by Director Yohan, any support?
Support, Meriden.
Support by Director Riordan, any discussion? All with a favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen.
Just an informational piece, amendment 13, we'll be bringing to present to you for the North Star site work that was underneath the VHS and the gym remodel, and then some miscellaneous work going on in this building as well. So that'll be in February, once we get all that pricing in, and we actually have some hard numbers.
You get to see us again before the quarter.
Hey, Pete and Pat, before you go, they didn't tell me to say this, and they're going to be embarrassed by it, but they should receive kudos. Board, you need to know that these two gentlemen received a major award internally from Kraus Anderson. I saw pictures and award, and it was on core values, and Kraus Anderson does not give those out, they have a large number of employees, and you're looking at the two K.A. Core Values internal award winners, so.
All right. Congratulations.
Thanks, Mark.
Yeah.
Well deserved.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Yeah, thank you very much. See you next month.
Thank you.
I got to ask, do those two get their vote then too?
No.
No.
I should.
No.
Good try.
Up next is the consent agenda, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I will make that motion.
Motion by Director Bonniger, or by Director Yohan. Any discussion? If none being had, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Reports, Mr. Winter, this is a high school principal's report.
Good evening. Just a quick, quick few things from the high school. As most of you are well aware, we are halfway through the school year, it's hard to believe. We've come a long ways in, in the last four months, but Friday was the last day of our first semester, so we will start new classes, new semester tomorrow, so very excited for that. Again, every time you start a semester, along with that goes a lot of work, a lot of schedule adjustments, changes, so there will be a few, few different things as, as it's a little different with our current building, with changing classrooms and things, where teachers don't have their own classrooms, so crossing my fingers a little bit that we don't have anybody double booked or anything like that, we think it's all squareway, but we will certainly work through it and then fix it very quickly tomorrow if we do have any of those issues. So we're excited for the second semester to begin, and graduation will be here before we know it, so the year is really flying by. On January 31st, which is a little over a week away, the high school is hosting Essential Health, and they are hosting a health fair at our building, so in the Essential Health Wing on that day, they will be presenting and having demonstrations, hands-on things for all our students. It will begin with a overall presentation to nine through, for ninth through 12th grade students, and then from there, they will break out and grade by grade go through the health fair, so very excited and thankful for Essential Health on that. So very excited and thankful for Essential Health on that. Earlier in January, and Willie maybe talked about it a little bit, but we did send a group of students down to the cities. And they toured US Bank Stadium and the Mall of America. And they came back with just incredible glowing experience as they came back. Mr. Hammer, who teaches our business courses and career courses, did a lot of work getting all this set up along with Ms. Oja, our career counselor. And they really got to go in and see, especially in the US Bank Stadium, the very ins and outs of how the stadium operates. I know that even some of the stadium people, I know Ms. Oja really pressed as to what their kids could see and pushed them a little bit. And our kids were in production booths and things like that where most normal tours do not get to see. As you're probably well aware, and I'll talk about it in a second, we have a pretty strong group of kids right now that are interested in media and television and production. And I know one of these students in particular was there and it was a great experience for him. And really, it's something that reinforced him in his potential career moving forward. So very exciting and they had a great experience, so we appreciate that. Last, Wednesday and Thursday, our careers class ended near the end of their careers course. All ninth graders take careers as ninth grade first semester. And they had an interview day. So we brought people in throughout the community and every student in the course was interviewed as a professional interview. And they came and sat down with someone who interviews people for their living or is a retired person who did it for their living. And they got a professional interview and was given feedback. It was very cool to see a lot of 14, 15-year-old students dressed up the best they could, extremely nervous, waiting for their very first, for most of them, interview. And it's just a fabulous experience for them to prepare themselves when they go out here in the next few years to get interviewed. And then the following day, as the career class ended their semester, they signed up for a career academy. So this is the first grade that really has selected and they're through their careers course now and they are selecting a career academy. Through that career academy, then the hope, and when I talk about the registration guide a little bit, I'll talk about it a little bit more. But we'll guide them a little more as to which courses they should be gearing themselves for throughout their 10th through 12th grade years to prepare them for the career that they selected. For the career academy they selected. Obviously, it's going to change. They may take courses and they may find out that, you know what, I really don't necessarily like this career. And then it's probably as valuable, if not more valuable than the course itself, just so they don't spend two years in college and then decide, oh, I don't like this anymore and change things. So all of those things, we hope we can really reinforce with students, really gear them toward the point to when they graduate, they know what career they would like to do and really have a good head start on that. Takes us kind of into registration. I know it seems a long ways off and it's hard to believe, but we are starting to register for 2024, '25 school year. So obviously, you'll see the course registration guides here shortly. But kind of the timeline for registration, it's next week already, we will present the registration guides to students. And then register students online early February with the hopes of getting most of the current eighth through 11th graders registered by mid-February. And then we'll just have our current sixth graders that we'll need to go into and get those students registered as well. So truly, hopefully, we will have all students that have requested courses by the end of February to the point where we can start gearing to see what the interest lies. Where we need to start placing teachers, what courses we're going to run, what courses are we unable to run because of lack of interest, those types of things. So the overall schedule, because I know that comes up often, and we are still on track, if everything continues to go well. And part of this will depend on you, as long as we can get a budget through where we don't get delayed. We should have a schedule together by the time school is out. That hasn't happened in the past. Last year, we got delayed a little bit, I know with the budget and then with the closing of buildings and everything kind of got put on hold with the schedule. So we're hopeful, I do believe it's doable, and that is our goal right now. And it's still on track to get a schedule out by June 1st. So cross our fingers, but I think it's doable. Just a couple other quick things, tournament season is upon us. Winter sports are really, for some, winding down. It's hard to believe, it is end of January. But a lot of the, a lot of the sports, along with a lot of the activities, speech, one act play, those tournaments are also coming very soon. So within the next six weeks, all our teams will be in tournament play and hopefully moving on to different levels of the section and state tournaments. And then the last thing I just want to touch on again, and I talked a little bit when we talked about the trip to the cities. Is that we do have a group of students that really are doing a lot of work and a lot of very incredible work with the videoing. They're doing their weekly TV show on Friday mornings, that's a live broadcast. They're also attending at least one, if not multiple, games per week. And if you watch even the first episodes and the first games they've done until what they're doing now, the amount of growth that they've had as students, the amount of experience they're gaining. Every week, they seem to be adding more and more things to their productions. It is very impressive as to what they're doing. And it is a lot of work. Mr. Bryson does a lot of work with them as well. But we do have a great group of students that are really working hard and it's very neat to see. And it's productions that rival, you know, some TV studios. So it is very, very impressive, the work that they're doing. So I can't thank all of those students enough. That, any questions you have for me?
I do.
Yes.
So I went through, I went through the course handbook for the seventh and eighth grade as well, so ninth through 12. And I couldn't help but notice that there's a lot of courses that aren't being offered for the '24, '25 school year and only a few additions. And for me, as somebody that's been pretty passionate about the career academies, I'm concerned about that.
And the reason they're not offered is when we offer so many every year, there isn't enough students to take it. So we end up not being able to run it because there's not enough students, you know, every year to spread it out. So we don't offer it next year, but then will the following. So that's the plan and the theory moving forward is. And when I talk about the course catalog a little bit, when you start seeing, you know, if a student selects the business academy and then their career pathway. In those pathways are groups of courses that we're going to encourage kids to take, depending on what their career field is. And so through that, from their 10th through 12th grade year, they need to make sure they know, okay, I need to take these courses. And then when they look in the catalog, if it's not offered this year, make sure you take it and so it's offered next year. So those types of things. So yeah, you're right, there are a number of courses that aren't going to be offered next year. With the plan being, they're not eliminated and taken off the record. They're just delayed a year and then they'll be offered the next year.
Can I point out a couple that I was concerned about? So one of them was econ.
Yep.
So that seems like that's a class that is needed. And then math applications, if I remember correctly, math applications is more or less for kids who maybe aren't looking at going that four-year college route. So that was an option for those students. And the other thing too, that I was a little bit disappointed about, because I personally know somebody, you know, a couple of years ago, that became interested in athletic training because of us having athletic trainers. And that's a course that I thought for sure would be offered within, you know, the healthcare course or whatever, or academy. And it's not being offered.
And specifically with the athletic training one, the reason it's delayed a year, it's a new course. We don't know who can teach it because of the actual field itself. We're not sure if our current hired teachers are qualified and licensed to teach it. So that's some of the delay there. But the plan is definitely to offer it here and to expand it, for sure.
I just wanted to make sure that we talk about that.
I have a question on, it's just something, I saw a little excerpt of a hockey game being broadcast and it was being called by two students of the Rock Ridge. I tell you what, it was hilarious watching. I don't know who they were, but they were two students of ours and they did spot-on job. I mean, so that's all I gotta say, it was really.
And every week, they're getting better.
Yeah. Who's the guy with the mustache? I mean, who?
And I've watched the news crew do like the weather and those kinds of things. And as a matter of fact, I think they're going to be potentially interviewing our new student school board reps as well. So that's pretty cool. I like to see those things going on.
So Mark, I have a question or two.
Yes.
So along the lines of what Brandy was asking, so when you add courses, first of all, evidently, I was going to ask, are there any new courses? Well, Brandy answered that, there are. How do you choose which new courses you're going to provide? That's part A. And then part B is, when you add new ones, if you only have so many students and they so many hours and so many credits they can take, does that have any effect on the ones that have been dropped? The more things you add and the same amount of students or the less students, then you've got an economy there.
Correct, that is precisely why we don't necessarily, aren't going to offer everything every year. It's not that they're not important, some of these courses. But exactly like you said, if you offer everything, then you don't have enough students to run any classes, then what do you do? You know, when you start to get into those below 15 numbers, you know, it's not real feasible to run the course. So now you're making schedule changes and shifting and, but if you can go every other year, alternative. Obviously, some of it, a lot of it is talk to the staff, talk to the teachers, and we're talking to students and different things. We did go through, and again, when we get to the handbook and we're kind of getting into it right now, but that's okay.
Sorry.
No, you're fine. When we created those documents as to which academies and then under the academies are different career pathways. And then under each pathway, there's a bunch of sample careers up above. That's where the staff over the last three months have been going through, okay, these are the courses we currently offer. They fit under this, excuse me, this career. And then, oh, excuse me. And then, I lost my train of thought, those careers. And then which courses do we have that actually fall in line? Oh, excuse me, I'm fighting a cold too here, so. So yeah, as we looked at it, our teachers really looked, what are we currently offering? So if you have nursing, for example, which courses are we currently offering that fall that students would really benefit to take for their nursing career? And then are there courses that are missing? Should we be adding something? So where you'll see a lot of the courses in industrial tech, should there be a math course that fits better into carpentry skills rather than, you know, engineering, those types of things? So that's kind of the discussions that the staff had, kind of moving forward that whole process.
I have a question. When you're having a class one year and you're not having a class another, it seems like, are we at risk for not having a consistent education flow for these kids by doing that? As I'm listening to you, I'm thinking, well, if I'm in eighth grade, then when I hit 10th grade and I want to, you know, I might miss that time, you know, with comes and goes and it might throw kids off. If that makes sense.
It makes sense. And we have, I have them already, charts of these different careers. And we're not quite to that point yet as to planning out, these are the courses that you're going to need if you're nursing, if you're interested in nursing. And this is when they're going to be offered over the next three years. So the plan, and again, we're really a year away from that. But the plan would be to have all students to have a faculty advisor that is going to walk them through, very similar to when you go to college and you have a career plan as far as all the courses you need to do, just in a much smaller scale. So if you're nursing, these are the six courses we really believe you should have to be successful and to really prepare yourself for going into nursing. And then these are when they're offered, these are when you should take them, those types of things.
So now I'm going to give you another crazy question. So I'm going to go into nursing, I'm a ninth grader, I want to get into that. And so I'm going to take all the nursing things. And then all of a sudden, in 12th grade, I decide I want to be a carpenter. How is that going to play out for me?
Not well.
Yeah, not well.
Well, the other thing, the other thing that I was thinking while Mark is talking, we're in the infancy of this.
Right, and so I'm just asking, yeah.
We're one year into it, so kids that are in 11th grade, they only have a year left. Kids that are in 10th, they're going to see it. Kids that are in ninth are going to experience it even more and things will change. So that's kind of what I'm thinking.
Thank you. To answer your question, and again, it is, we're gearing our kids to prepare them for the next step. They still have to take all their core classes, they still have to, you know, to meet all the state requirements. I would throw it back to that is, wouldn't it be great to know that you're not going into nursing as a senior then, rather than go through four years of college and then decide you don't like it?
To me, that's the whole point. To me, it's all about exposure for kids because typically, kids choose careers that are visible to them. If their parent is a firefighter, if their parent is a nurse or, you know, a teacher, you know, whatever they're exposed to typically is kind of what they're, where they start looking, and it's exposure. So they do have that opportunity to look at, you know, the different careers and decide not just what they enjoy, but also what they don't want to do.
Mark, a related question is, it ties right into this, but goes maybe a step further. At what point is the point of no return? At what point can a student no longer change career paths because they'd never be able to take all of the courses of that changed career path?
To me, there is no point of return. Why would we, if they know they don't want this career, let's change them and let's, you could try as much as you can then.
I mean, you wouldn't finish that career path.
You're not going to finish it, no.
Well, we have, don't we have three career paths or something?
They're still earning credits though.
You still earn credits.
I understand that, but so.
Most careers, you're still going to have to do schooling or trainings of some sort afterwards. Not always, but most of them, you will.
No, I understand that, but to complete the career path, yes, you're going to get your credits no matter if you switch career paths or what. But to finish a career path, there's got to be a point where it's just not possible to finish the whole career path after you've gotten to a certain point. And based on Alexandria or maybe because they've been doing it for longer, yes, we're in the infancy, we're learning, but a lot of schools have gone through it already.
And members of the board, just so you know, this is why you're doing something that nobody else is doing, career paths. You're starting in the upper elementary with the media program, with kids who are trying different things. Are they visual, do they like wearing this way or not? So by the time these kids get through to the ninth grade, they should be much smarter and have better decisions so that they're a little more firm. But it is right, we are going to have some kids, Alexandria said it's going to happen where they switch, they shift. But we want them shifting now in high school rather than when they're burning through cash in college. So we're going to have some kids, yes, but we're trying to reduce it as much. And you're doing things in this career academy to help in the seventh and eighth grade and sixth grade that are going to help the kids. You're doing the leader in me, you're having kids talk about leadership skills and all these other kids and the media programs that are helping learning. So all those things are going to help to the issue that Mark is talking about right now.
So you can switch career paths, but you, there's a point in time where you can't finish the whole career path.
Mr. Chair, I think, and I might be wrong, but to answer Polly's question is, as you said, they're still going to meet all the, all the.
as you said, they're still going to meet all the, all the requirements that are going on in another school. Hibbing or Grand Rapids to graduate the state of Minnesota. So the worst case scenario is you decide your senior year, you're not going to go in that. You're going to be going out your senior year the same way that a school that doesn't have career paths is. You're going to be educated at the state level. And you've had a valuable, a valuable experience, knowing that you don't want to go down that way.
I understand that. Those are the core classes, the required standards. And these, we're talking about electives here. And we're talking about career paths. That's what I'm talking, I understand that totally. That we're not going, students will, will be able to get the graduation requirements no matter what.
And my understanding is just because they choose like the health, healthcare career path, it's not locking them into it. Like, we're not saying they have to, regardless of what they are interested in, they, they have to be a nurse.
Just exposure to that profession, sorry.
Exactly. But like Dr. Schmidt said, he had mentioned about being smarter. I don't, I don't know if I'll necessarily, if that's the word I necessarily use. I would use more informed. They're more informed about what's out there.
So, and one last question. I see, I noticed that there's not Avid in, they're not going to offer it in the tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade next year? Not offered for ten, eleven, and twelve next year?
We are doing a reboot with Avid. It's currently not running this year because we did not have enough student interest. So we're working with the Avid folks as to how do we regroup and and build it again from the ninth grade on up. Because really it is with Avid, it is a building progression. And it's, it's working with a group of students as a cohort as they go through their high school career. So with everything else that's going on and has gone on, Avid kind of got, and again, we're talking Avid as the Avid elective. We're not talking as Avid as the building wide Avid where we're still doing those teaching strategies and all that. This is strictly the Avid elective course. And we're just going to do a little reboot with that. And because you really have to have, you have to have the right person in that course in order for it to be effective. And and that's kind of where we have to to reboot and gear it back up.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So on eight eleven, on eight, or eight, eight one point one, Mr. Winter, we are voting on the seventh, eighth, the seventh, eighth handbook as well as the ninth and twelfth, nine through twelve handbook, correct?
Yes.
Did you have more to present?
Really, the, the seventh and eighth changed very little, just a few minor course descriptions. But they're, they're kind of locked into what their choices are. And it's really inexperienced to give every student the same experience in seventh and eighth grade and touch on all of those different elective areas. The, the high school, nine through twelve, if you look on page thirteen is the ninth grade academy, and that's kind of their courses for ninth grade. List the cores along with the electives that they can start taking. And again, it's that semester break where the ninth graders will then select an academy, which is where our ninth graders are at right now. And then they can start gearing their tenth through twelfth grade with which classes they want to take as it falls into their, their career academy, their career pathways, and potentially their careers. And those charts are on page fifteen through seventeen, if you want to look at them at some point. And again, those list the academy at top and then the career pathways and then potential careers. And obviously, careers are endless, but those are kind of the highlighted careers or careers that we kind of believe other careers are very similar or closely related to those. The rest of it is in course descriptions. There are a few minor things that have to be added yet, a few course numbers, a few course number changes. But as far as additional courses, things like that, they're all in there. It's just a few minor, minor things that when we submitted it, we're fine with that, so.
Okay.
Any other questions?
We almost have any questions? Okay, can I get a motion to approve eight one point one?
I think that motion will prove.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Director Westby. Any more discussion? All who's in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Up next is eight point two. We got the auditor's report. Presented by Devin Seigler and Andrea.
Thank you, Andrea.
You're probably only going to watch.
Let's look at that one.
Devin Seigler from Arc June Hani have been working on this Virginia Evans district for, for over ten years. And I'm here to present audit report. I, well, you guys have all the paper copy in front of you, so I'll, I'll just kind of pick out pages and go through. Otherwise, there's like a hundred pages in this report, I'm pretty close. Please feel free to interrupt me as I go if you have any questions. Otherwise, you can save until the end and go over in more detail. On page two for the audit report, this is independent, independent auditor's report. Specifically, paragraph two says, in our opinion, the company financial statements in all material respects are presented in compliance with GAAP, which is generally accepted accounting principles. This, this opinion paragraph does not give an opinion of the financial health of the district. Rather, it gives an opinion that the financial statements are presented in accordance with GAAP. Page six through twelve are MVNA, so it's management discussion and analysis, which it kind of recaps all of twenty twenty-three. Most of it is self-explanatory, so I'm not going to spend any time there. Page thirteen and fourteen are the district-wide financial statements. Page thirteen is a statement of net position, basically a balance sheet for the district as a whole. There's a lot of items in here that, that maybe the board is not necessarily concerned with as far as budgeting. So I like to rely more on the fund financial statements as, to go over to make comparisons from here. So page fifteen is the balance sheet of all the major funds and then the non-major funds. The major funds include general fund, debt service, and capital projects. The non-major funds are food service and community service. I'm going to go through these in a little bit more detail and pinpoint maybe some problem areas that I see. So on page seventeen is the statement of revenues, expenditure, and changes in fund balance. You can see the third row from the bottom is the net change in fund balance. So obviously, if your, your fund balance is positive and you're growing your fund balance, it's not necessarily a that big of a concern. However, in the general fund, there was a three hundred and forty-three thousand dollar decrease. And debt service, there's a three hundred and thirty-two thousand dollar increase. And then the capital projects funds, a forty million dollar decrease, but obviously, that's due to all construction. I'll go over the other governmental funds in more detail in a second. However, those two funds, which are made up of the community service and the food service, had a large decrease. And I believe it was due to fiscal year twenty-two getting federal funding for meals. And then that was cut off in fiscal year twenty-three. So that may be, maybe something that the board wants to look into going forward now that meals are funded by the state. So maybe you're going to be, your fund balance in your food service fee, those are reimbursed. However, like going through your budget in future years, keep that in mind. Page nineteen is the general fund, statement of change, statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance, budget actual. This provides a comparison between your budgeted numbers and your actual numbers. One thing that we typically look at and we have a note on is if the district went over budget. If it looks like the, the general fund did, however, revenues were over budget too. So whatever over expenditures there were, there were over revenues to compensate. Also, in the general fund, there was a transfer out of two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars that went to the community service fund. Because that fund cannot have a deficit fund balance.
What's in the community service fund? It's not community head, is it? Is it community head?
Yeah, yeah.
Just that?
No, there's community head. Five fund balances that are tracked in there. Community education, community services, I guess.
There's just others besides community head in there.
And so I'm going to kind of fly through all the notes. Because those are pretty self-explanatory. If you want to read more, feel free. But I don't think I need to spend any time there. Okay, here we go. Page seventy-three may, may answer all your questions about the community service special revenue fund. There's restricted fund balances for, for community education, early childhood, family education, school readiness, and community services. I'll jump, hit the page seventy-four, which, these are those non-major governmental funds. As you can see, the food service special revenue fund, like I mentioned, had a loss of two hundred and five thousand for fiscal year twenty-three. However, hopefully, your budgeting for fiscal year twenty-four reflects the additional funding coming from the state to supply reimbursement for meals. Page seventy-five, this is a more detailed comparative balance sheet for the general fund. As you can see, the third line from the bottom is the unassigned fund balance. I want to take a look at this number specifically because this is the balance that is neither non-spendable, restricted, or included. That balance went down by roughly about one point five million. And it could be an indication of, of some overspending. And I passed a spreadsheet out to Andrea to kind of dig into this. Well, where, where's the unassigned fund balance going? And a big portion of it was from fund three, which is your transportation fund. So obviously, the opening of the new schools and a lot more buses, third-party transportation. I know there was a lot of additional overtime and that all contributed. And that makes up about half of, of that decrease in the unassigned fund balance. And obviously, with the new schools opening, there, there's going to be a lot of transitioning for you guys, understanding, you know, how mu, how much travel there is going to be and how that's all going to work anyway. But that was kind of one of the, the red flags that, that I dug into and saw why that balance is decreasing. Page JD two is the schedule of expenditures for federal awards. It provides detail of all the programs that, federal programs that the school district spent under the year, or for the year. Expenditures over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars require a single audit. So basically, we have to pick a couple of these programs and do a more in-depth audit. I believe it was food service and then the COVID education stabilization fund, which is S R funding for the two programs that we selected. And finally, I will go over the finding, which we typically have every year. That's on page ninety-two. Lack of control over financial reporting process. We have this on ninety to ninety-five percent of the audits that I work on. It is finding basically due to the district relying on our firm to put together financial security through GAAP. And there's no process after the fact of, between us preparing this financial and then you guys reviewing it to make sure all the disclosures and everything are, are in this report. Like I said, ninety to ninety-five percent of our clients have this. Then ninety-four, I think we have eight management points that I'll go through quick. So this management letter is, is written communication from our firm to the board. And it's, it's things that we found, but they're, they're more minor than the findings, like the, the financial reporting that I just went through. So this is, I like to consider these more like areas of improvement or, or things that we noticed that, that should be taken care of by next year. First one, cash investment reconciliations were not reconciled timely to the general ledger throughout the year. I believe Arc came in and helped out with some, some general checking account cash reconciliations. And then beyond that, our firm came in and we had to do some reconciliations for investments and then tie all those pooled accounts to the general ledger. Typically, we'd like to see that done and timely, done timely, which typically is funny. Number two, impressed account activity was not reported on the books. This fund, I believe, came over from Evans, and it is reconciled on an Excel, but not in the smart, smart finance software. So that's basically get it on the software. I think the idea behind that is it might be closing anyway. Number three.
Could you explain what an impressed fund is?
It's like a reimbursement fund. It's spent without having to go through the same procedures and then it's reimbursed. Similar to, well, some places call it petty cash accounts. This impressed fund's a little bit bigger than, than a typical petty cash. Number three, banking investment accounts continue to have old district information. So there's been some turnover in the business office. And probably now is the best time to get all the old district information off there. And any previous business names off there, and now that Andrea's taking over, get her name and pass the authorized signer on it. There has been a lag in, in doing that kind of for the last few years. So I, I think now's the time that it definitely needs to be taken care of. Number four, some donations, it's difficult to, to, to track some of the donations. I think, though, well, there's a period when obviously you guys combine and everybody want to jump on board with donations. I don't know if you guys are getting significant donations that you have been. But really, one of the best ways that we saw was just have a spreadsheet on it. Here's the donor, here's what it was spent for. And then when we come in, we can have that spreadsheet and know exactly what was coming in, what was going out. Now, that's kind of difficult too, because it's, it's almost in addition to the, the other everyday accounting that, that goes on in the district. But that's one area that if donating. But that's one area that if donations are gonna continue to come in in mass quantities like that is to have a process to track them. Number five, OPEP, well, actuarial. In the past, we've received this fairly late, and this year wasn't an exception. So we, I think we received it January eleventh. Things did progress more slowly this year than in previous years. And and so we we were we were running behind anyway, and then that that OPEP actuarial came in on the eleventh, so the way I think they issued their report, they went fifteenth or fourteenth. So that was one of the things that had has held us up in the past and then held us up this year as well. Six, seven, and eight all have to do with student activity accounts. Similar to the the district as a whole, some of those accounts weren't reconciled real timely. And the bookkeeping could could use some improvement. Also, number seven, oh, again, merging of the two districts. There's there's some old Virginia stuff, some old Evlin stuff. I think it's time to get rid of that. And then number eight, there's obviously negative balances on some of these. So I think just cleaning it up in general. Those are more just just kind of bookkeeping items. So that's all I had to really go through. If anybody wants to to dig into the numbers more, I'm happy to do so, or if anybody has any questions.
Thanks.
Well, I would, but time is short. Maybe I could talk with internally with some people on some of these numbers. There's so much here.
Yeah.
It's very, very hard to follow it all. But I have some particular questions I could I could ask.
And you can feel free to shoot me an email and and I'll be happy to to go through.
Thanks for that invitation. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any more, any questions for Devin? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the superintendent report. Superintendent.
You have to vote on it.
Just certify that on it?
Um, you could vote to approve it, but at this time, you're just hearing it.
Okay, that's that's good. Very good, thanks.
Then, as you requested, you're gonna get extra special treatment on budgeting coming up here for the next four meetings. You're still with some extra meeting, but that's not my purpose right now. Only thing I wanna tell the public and the board is Friday night, Saturday, Evlin gym, be there. This is the place to be. We've got sales going on of excess goods. We did one in Virginia. We did one in Gilbert, so we're doing one in Evlin. We have things priced low because we want the folks in the area to have opportunities to get by them. We have jerseys. We have desks. We have bookshelves. We have all sorts of other miscellaneous things. So Easter is coming up, so if you're looking for a holiday present for someone in your family, we think this is a good time to go out and start looking. Christmas isn't that far down the road. Stock it, store up. So just want everybody to know, we'll have the doors open. We will work with people and we're pricing everything low because we want the area people to have an opportunity to have their first hands on. And this is a pick-up-and-go type situation. This is not a do bit. So if you like something, pick it up, take it home with you. So that's all I've got for the superintendent report, just letting people that the sale is coming up this weekend.
All right.
What's that like?
What? It's it's quiet.
Four to seven.
Four to seven.
Friday.
Friday, yeah, four to seven.
One on Saturday.
Can I take a picture of that? Here, I'll just give you, put this in your pocket.
Spread the news. And kids, you can buy this stuff too and take home and put in your bedroom, places like that. Lots of stuff for you to put in.
Okay. Can I, were that, were all, you all done now?
That's all I've got. I'm done.
Can I, next is the treasury, treasurer's report? Can I get a motion to approve the treasurer's treasurer's report? Motion by Director Riordan, supported by Director Addy. Any discussion? All is in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, the next is gonna be the policies. We're gonna, we're gonna do all of them at once unless unless you have ones you wanna remove out of there and talk about, but it's gonna be policy two-three-five, two-thirteen, four-ten, four-thirteen, four-sixteen, five-oh-six, five-fifteen, and six-twenty.
I request that two-oh-three-point-five be removed.
What is it?
To be voted on separately, two-oh-five-point-threes, two-oh-three-point-five.
Two-oh-three-point-five. So you want, okay, so so you're good with, you're good from two-thirteen on? So for for discussion?
And this is second.
So for discussion and to to vote separately, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're gonna be voting on two-thirteen, four-ten, four-thirteen, four-sixteen, five-oh-six, five-fifteen, and and six-twenty. Can I get a motion?
Got a motion.
Motion by Director Yohan.
I'll second it.
Support by Director Wesby. Any discussion? All is in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Director Sharkin, nine-point-one or two-oh-three-point-five is up for discussion.
Well, I'll do a motion to prove it as is, then if you support, we do a discussion.
Okay, all right. Motion by Director Riordan, support by Director Lotiger. Any discussion? All is in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes five-one.
Did you vote?
You said?
Yeah. No, you voted?
Voted yes?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes five-one. administrative items. Consider approval of a request from the town of Fayle for the baseball school that are currently located at the Evlin Gilbert campus. Can I get a motion for that?
I will make that motion.
Motion by Director Yohan, supported by Director Riordan. Any discussion? All is in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Ten-point-two, consider approval of a request from Rockford's Girls Swimming Booster to acquire the Evlin Gilbert Swimming Record Board and Trophy Case. And a motion for that for ten-point-two?
I'll I'll make that.
Motion by Director Lotiger, a support by Director Addy.
All right, discussion on this.
Any, what's that?
I got some discussion. Why, okay, so Rockford Swimming Booster, what are we gonna do with it? The hallway of each, what are we gonna do?
What are they gonna do with it?
Yeah.
I don't know. They're asking to receive it.
We're not displaying it in the news?
No, we're not even displaying the new school.
No. I don't know.
Oh, how is the letter written?
I'll see it.
It's not here. So if you're uncomfortable at that, we can hold on this one and get more details and bring this back.
So I will rescind, and we will rescind my motion. You rescind your motion? Okay, so we will take ten-point-two table for further discussion.
Okay.
Okay, do we need a motion on that to table it? Further discussion?
Might as well.
Okay, and a motion to table it for further discussion. I'll make the motion.
I'll support that.
Support by Director Yohan, all is in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Ten-point-three, consider approval of agreement between Rockford's Public Schools and the International Falls Public Schools in which the services of Tom Vollem, a jibbling instructor, are being rendered for spring semester twenty-twenty-four. I'll make that motion.
Support.
My Director Addy, support by Director Riordan. Any discussion? All is in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Ten-point-four, roll call vote. I will ask the Director Lotiger to keep track of the roll call vote. Okay, on ten-point-four, consider approval of resolution to close the Franklin Elementary School.
I'll make that motion.
Motion, Director Yohan, support by Director Addy. This is a roll call vote.
His parents are here to, he's asked and I.
Yep.
Okay, thank you for attending.
Thank you, Ashlyn.
Attending.
Uh, where do you want this?
Just leave it on the table. We'll pick it up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Director Riordan.
Any discussion?
Oh, any discussion on this on ten-point-four? And none being had? Director Riordan.
Yes.
Director Riordan's a yes. Director Lotiger?
Yes.
Director Lotiger's a yes. Director Yohan?
Yes.
Director Yohan's a yes. Director Addy, yes. Director Sharkin?
No.
Director Sharkin is a no. Director Wesby?
Yes.
Yeah, Director Wesby is a yes. Same motion passes. Ten-point-five, consider approval of resolution to close the Evlin Gilbert High School. I have the motion.
Make the motion.
Motion by Director Yohan, support by Director Lotiger. It's a roll call vote.
Discussion, please.
Discussion? Any discussion?
I have some discussion on this one. One thing that Mr. Lampinen brought up was when it's talking about closing the high school, does that mean all the other, the grounds and things and and is is the is the multipurpose or the the gym, is that part of the high school? Is anything that is attached to?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm trying to think of any other grounds because on the Franklin, is does that, closing a building and having a football field and or that baseball open area that they turn into skating rink?
Right, doesn't mean you can't use those for something else or the city can't, but the building you're closing for school purposes.
Okay. So for the high school then, I think it's a little different situation than the than the Franklin because when we say we we don't have a, how's it saying? We don't have any current or foreseeable educational need there at the high school. You know, we've got some amenities in there. We've got two gyms. We've got two swimming pools and and some of this stuff, we've got a football field. Some of these things we're short on for athletics already. And I don't know, do we really not have a foreseeable need for that for practice and for like baseball and we're looking at soccer? We might need an extra soccer field to play on or football for the younger ones or maybe some even summer, summer sports and things?
There's agreement agreed upon to give that land, as bare land. It's it's done. It's already been agreed upon and voted and and.
This resolution is to close just the high school. Yeah, so it has no bearing on football fields or playgrounds or anything.
Okay, but there are gyms, there's pools. Forget the field then. We have a media center there. Would we not have any educational need for some extra square footage for something? I mean, we are talking about the fourteen-oh-two building and we already bought the fourteen-oh-four building, but that's a nice, that's a nice media center. We've got an auditorium. We've got, what did I say, that music room? It's a beautiful music room. And we have, we have a problem up at the Laurentian where the the teachers and the music department are saying they don't have the proper area to, you know, to give their their music instruction to. So, you know, when we say we don't have a need for for this educational need, I'm thinking, yes, I think we do, but why, I'm just wondering, because we've done it in the past, we tear things down and then we build something of the same thing. Like say we're talking about building a soccer field, okay? Because we're taking on soccer. Well, that might be for 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 varsity and and games and tournaments and stuff. Well, what about practice? You know, we're gonna have a big practice need, and so if we're gonna either even selling that, I know that's not a building, but it's part of the discussion maybe further here about selling that hall. We're either giving things away or we're destroying them, and we probably have educational needs for some parts of that building. Maybe not the classrooms at the senior high school, but like I said, auditorium, media center, swimming pools, gyms. We've eliminated how many gyms? Three in Virginia, three in Gilbert, now two in Evlin. And we're gonna be crying for some more gym space to, you know, probably for practices for games and things. So that's, that's my thought, those are my thoughts. I just don't think we don't have a foreseeable educational need for some parts of.
And members of the board, we do not have a foreseeable foreseeable educational needs for that facility. The, we have talked about it. The soccer thing is a completely different thing to this, so I'll steer away from that right now. You have transportation issues, bus, you simply don't need the building. That's why you built the Curri Academy. That's why you put the square footage in there. The Laurentian, that's a separate issue from that. I do not have a reason for you to continue operating that building.
I just wanted to make those points. I know how this vote is going to go, but I think some of these things need to be said and at least thought about and remembered and and heard. So I've said, I've said my piece on that one, that part of it. And so I think Catherine said, and I noticed it in your packet too, that the that the buildings would be demolished after two years of what the vote? That's not how it was. That we would, we would advertise them for two years after they were vacated. And so even if it's just a clarification, if it's on this sheet of paper, I can probably find you a half a dozen more where it said that was the intention to to keep them open for two years after vacated to see if there was any possible interest in purchase.
The only other thing I'll bring up to the board is that the, I believe we have tried to market the buildings for two years. We have not, we have not found a suitable buyer. Now, this is not relevant to this resolution, but the longer you keep old buildings that we cannot sell, the more it's gonna cost you to do something with them down the road. So that's why this meeting is occurring now.
Yeah, and that may or may not be true depending upon the circumstances, but I just wanted to note that if.
No, it's true. Things generally cost more the next year and the year after that.
If you sell it, you don't even spend the demolition money, but I'm addressing this.
I would have loved to have sold it.
Okay, I I'm addressing this is because you gave this in your presentation.
I did.
And I wrote the notes on the resolution, okay? Then you talked about the tax impact, but those numbers were based on twenty-eighteen taxes and now it's.
Director, we're talking about.
Yes, we are.
We're talking about closing a building. We're not talking about the tax impact and stuff like that.
Number one D talks about, let's see, there's the tax thing here. There's a bullet point about cost savings and significant cost savings. All I wanted to make a note, I just wanna make a statement that the tax impact now, the year of, the year after and every subsequent year after that was totally different and the rest of the story is those tax impacts in your packet were based on twenty-eighteen. They are not reflective of tax impact now. And then number D, one D, the operating costs of the new versus the old. We don't, at the time, we don't know now if the operating costs of, say, the high school, if we're talking about the high school now, were less than the costs of our new high school. Okay, so when we make a statement that it was gonna cost us more to keep those open than to build new and to have a new high school, we don't even know until now. Until that school is running for a year or two or three years, we won't know the total operating costs.
Oh, there's a way to figure it out. It's called, it's called a load loss calculation or a manual J. They can, they can calculate exactly how much energy that building is using.
I know, that's fine. Those are, those are projections.
No, no, it's it's a calculated formula, right down to, right down to probably, it's it's calculated.
That I personally don't know and others don't know either, and if I don't know, if that new high school is costing us more than both the Virginia high school and the Evlin high school put together at this point in time, okay? That's the only statement I wanted to make. And I'll, I'll be following those. I mean, I'm gonna.
The number was told to me that the Franklin costs seventy-five-thousand dollars to heat and the Laurentian was fifteen thousand. I mean, that's sixty-thousand dollars to save, just in one building. That's what, I mean, that's substantial. That's a teacher's salary.
Seventy-five versus fifteen?
Yep, that's, that's the number that was told to me.
That that's just heat alone, right?
Yep, and LED lights and everything else, it's a motion activated, it's, it's, it's gotta be.
If you wanna go down that road, I mean, it costs fifty-four-thousand dollars a year to heat a junior high building in Devlin that you didn't occupy for thirty years, so you had fifty-four-thousand dollars basically a year times thirty years.
You're talking about the old Devlin junior?
Yeah, that was getting received for thirty years with nobody in it.
Less insurance, electricity.
Insurance, electricity, I mean, that was.
Water.
Anyway, I wanted to make those statements that were related to the Evlin Gilbert High School.
This is roll call, correct?
This is roll call.
Okay.
So a motion by Director Yohan, support by Director Lotiger. All discussion has had, has had. Okay, Director Riordan?
Yes.
Director Riordan's a yes. Director Lotiger?
Yes.
Director Lotiger's a yes. Director Yohan?
Yes.
Director Yohan's a yes. Director Addy is a yes. Director Sharkin?
No.
Director Sharkin's a no. Director Wesby? Director Wesby is a yes. Motion passes six one, or five one. Okay, ten point six, consider approval of request from the city of Gilbert.
I'll make a motion, deny this request.
Deny it?
No.
We got a motion by Director Yohan to deny it. Can I get support? Can I get support?
Excuse me, I'm, I'm sorry, I missed that.
I made a motion to deny this request.
I'd support to discuss it.
Okay. So deny it or, so you support to discuss it? He's voting to deny.
Right. But I, are we gonna discuss it?
You still seconded it.
Lisa seconded to, for discussion.
Okay, seconded for discussion. Okay. We got two motions, we got a denial and a discussion.
No, 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 no. When you, a motion and a second, then you call for discussion automatically.
Okay, all right.
No matter what the motion was.
Yeah, I was just curious, uh, what, I, I have, I'm.
Let her explain.
Okay.
I mean, that's, I'm, I'm wondering.
So we're talking, we're talking this little piece of land. This is New Jersey, come up the hill. And you got this little piece of land that she wants to gain cartway. Right here, right? She wants like the parking lot, correct? Just a little piece of the parking lot so they can put the road through. Cause this is the parking lot, John, it's owned by the school district?
Yeah.
So then, this is, this is the road, the Nell Sheen would kind of sit right, right here.
Okay.
Okay, so this little piece of land here.
Yeah, I just wanna, I just don't want.
It goes to the city of Gilbert so she can get cartway to, to, so she can ease into her property.
Excuse me. I just didn't want to set a precedent of selling stuff for a dollar instead of market value, I guess, I, I mean.
No, this.
That was kind of my nature also, but.
This has to do with getting, this has to do with, like this Wisconsin Avenue, John?
Okay.
Here's Wisconsin Avenue, the school district, Golden's like half this, I believe, it's like half the street.
Well, yes, now, I did talk to Gilbert officials about, cause what happened in Devlin, and I realize that's coming up later, about tax, marketable taxable value. And I did talk to them about, I'm pretty sure you as a board are gonna say the same, similar things you said to the city of Devlin. And I believe they would consider that. But this proposal came in and I didn't want you not to know that the proposal had come in. So you could make a counter offer and say yes, but at the taxable rate.
So if I, if I see this correct, the reason this road jogs over onto school district property, if I remember it, there's a house built right at the end of the street, am I correct?
They, they want access.
There's a house built right here. So they gotta jog the road around the house.
And part of it was I didn't completely understand the map, I guess.
Hmm, yeah, because if you look, the, yeah, you come straight up and then it goes this way. And then there'd be a road that way and then that road would come across, that road would come across up here somewhere. If there was a road, this would all be behind the school. And then this New Jersey is probably, you know, this part here is owned by the school, but they would continue up. So like the old water tower was like right here, I believe. The existing parking lot is right here with the staff park.
Okay.
Right?
I'll rescind my motion. I'm okay with that actually.
Okay. Oh, I didn't get to let you see what I was doing.
I was listening to you. I, I looked at the map earlier.
Okay. All right, so you want to rescind your motion?
Yeah.
Okay. So Yohan's gonna rescind his motion?
I'll change it to approving him.
Okay, so we're gonna, motion by Director Yohan to approve ten point six.
Now just explain to me.
Okay, second by Director Addy. Oh, no, you seconded, you would have had, oh, just discussion. You want to second it?
I, I do believe I did second it, yeah, so I might as well.
He'll second it? Any further discussion on ten point six?
This is basically that the city wants to buy the land so they can license access to these people?
Correct, because they can't get to their parcel of land.
I know that, but there's a two-step phase. Instead of just going and selling it to the people who want to, to access it, you, the city wants to buy it. I think they're probably going to use some of their money to build the rest of the road to that.
Correct.
Okay, so that's why.
To build a house back there.
Through the city first for purchase and then they will give them access.
Yeah, cause you're gonna need probably some way to get utilities up there and they'll need that road.
Thanks for explaining it, Billy. I understand it better.
We had that discussion, I don't know where we were, but we talked about that piece of land. I think with the lady came to work.
She was supposed to come, never came.
Facilities talked about it.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Ten point six, any more discussion? All is in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes unanimously. Ten point seven, consider approval of the third, third amendment to agreement regarding school district property. Any motion on that?
No move.
Motion by Director Riordan, supported by Director Addy. Any discussion? All is in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.